Increased police presence at and around 75 Reddick Street for the concerns of blue homeless activity and panhandling. The city and the council are aware that this has become a quality of life issue for the community at large. We continually address it to come up with solutions. It is a sensitive area from many perspectives, and the law precludes action from law enforcement in many instances. We will continue to work toward a resolution within the guidelines of the law with utmost consideration for the needs and expectations of safety for all our community residents. As with past initiatives, we will remain proactive on this issue. Next, there was a question regarding officer salaries. The starting salary is $51,188, and I can confirm that Officer Lugo did retire. Then there was a comment about the variation of our city council meetings and those of other municipal entities. We will follow our process and our form of governing with no intention to change anything at this time. Now, we'll go to the public hearings. Do I want to start?
Clerk.
Oh, we can. Council President, this is the time fixed for the public hearing on the 2022 municipal budget. The budget was approved by the government body on April 6, 2022, was advertised as required by law on April 20, 2022, together with the notice of the government for this time. Printed copies have been made available to the public during the past week and is available on our city website.
Thank you. Anyone who has not secured a copy of the budget may do so now, and at this time I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R-052200A by title only.
By the municipal council, whereas NJSA 48:4-8, as amended, provides that the budget as advertised shall be read in full at the public hearing, or that it may be read by its title if, (1) at least one week prior to the date of the hearing, and at the hearing, a complete copy of the approved budget, (a) shall be made available for the public inspection, and (b) shall be made available to each person upon request. And now, therefore be it resolved by the New Brunswick City Council that it hereby declare that the conditions of NJSA 48:4-8, as amended, set forth in subsections 1A and 1B have been met, and therefore, the budget of the year 2022 shall be read by title only. Be it further resolved that the certified copies of this resolution shall be sent by the city clerk to the following individuals, the city administrator and the CFO.
If anybody would like to speak on this ordinance only to read Resolution, to read the budget by title only, please step forward. Seeing none?
Are you further for going with Resolution on 48?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Secor Ludwig?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure for each person, desiring to be heard, may do so for five minutes per person, one time up. Address all questions to the chair, where necessary, they will be referred to individual members of the governing body or municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget before our school or county matters are not proper subjects of this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered tonight. I now declare open the public hearing on the 2022 municipal budget. Please step forward if you wish to speak on this resolution. You have five minutes, one time up. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Council President Charlie Cradaville, I'm the editor of New Brunswick today, living on Soudan Street in Brunswick. I had a number of questions, but first could I just get the basics of the budget, you know, impact on taxpayers and relative to last year, the size?
Mr. Rich, please.
Sure. So, the budget as proposed has a total expenditure of $97,815,132.13, supported by municipal This is the third year this budget holds in line municipal taxes and reduces municipal taxes for a second year in a row. The result of the tax for the operation of the city government for the average property owner, and an average property owner is defined as a value at $261,900, will decrease by $25 in the upcoming budget year. Those are high points on the numbers.
Thank you. Can I ask what kind of payment in lieu is being made by the two hospitals and the Rutgers? You're counting for a payment in lieu of taxes from those entities?
I don't have that exact number, but I would say...
Mr. Mulroy, do you know that off the top of your head?
Yes, for T. Peters Hospital, it's about $600,000. Robert Watson's is about $1,009,000.
Thank you.
And Rutgers?
Rutgers, I believe, is about $500,000.
Thank you. I wanted to ask about the building where you had your last meeting. I guess it's Civic Square 2, that's the one I see here on Sheet 17. Less than last year, but still a significant amount, three quarters of a million dollars for maintenance fee on that building. What is the city going to control costs of their partnerships with DMCO? Because this is a building where you don't own it, but you're, I guess, going to own it in 10 years, and they're charging you huge amounts for maintenance.
Mr. Dorsey?
So, what includes in that number is our capital commitment to maintain that building. There has been a need to upgrade the HVAC systems that are covered in that number, and ongoing capital projects. The building's relatively new, but there's a lot of end-of-life items in there, and we are maintaining those. So, on an annual basis, we review the capital plan with Keating, who puts it forward, and then we work with them to fund it so the building's kept standard.
If I could, Sheet 24, Code Blue, $90,000, I guess that's the grant from the county for Code Blue. Can you tell me how has that held up in terms of the cost of running it this past winter? I think we're through the winter now. Did $90,000 cover the whole thing, or how's that working out?
$90,000 was not enough to cover all of Code Blue.
And approximately how much over the $90,000?
There's a number of indirect costs that the city sustained. I don't have those quantified, but that $90,000 was consumed very quickly because we had a number of Code Blues this year, a record amount.
Okay. The final point I wanted to make is related to long-term tax exemptions. I know there's one that's creeping its way onto your agenda sooner or later, but there's also, I believe, at least 30 in effect as of now, and each of those agreements allows those developers that bypass paying school taxes on their buildings, and, you know, they're still getting a discount essentially for doing what are sometimes profitable projects, and they're not people who actually live here and they're getting this, you know, benefit typically. So, I wanted to ask if anybody could comment on the pilot revenue that you are getting, relative to prior years, and, you know, how much we're missing out on by giving the tax break as it is stopped, you know? A third, is my understanding?
I would argue to some degree that we're not missing out on anything. We're actually bringing in more funds than we would had these projects sat idle and we didn't have any development in the city. So, there's that side of it as well. Mr. Jules, if you'd like to add anything, or Mr. Shannon?
No, I didn't think I said one.
Yeah, how much is the revenue from the pilot?
In fact, I don't know.
The longer tax exemption, so they listed?
Mr. Mulroy?
Yeah, there's a figure in there. I think it's about $13.7 million. It's been increasing year over year.
Okay. Well, I'll look into it further. For the record, I don't think there should be time limited on the budget hearing. Is that the case? I'm going to be time limited?
Yeah, it's five minutes, and your time is expired.
Okay, that's not how it was done previously, and I think that's a shame that you won't allow me on the five minutes of input on a $90-plus-million-budget budget. Thank you.
For the record, I believe these were available, and you could have reached out to the administration or anybody that you wanted to speak to prior to this meeting as well. Next speaker, please. Please state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your address.
Danielle Moore, Somerset Street, M-O-O-R-Y.
Thank you.
Well, first, I would like to say, due to where I just see the article about taxes being reduced by $25 for taxpayers, I'm pretty sure anyone is on Facebook, due to where you saw, wow, with the cost of budget, the cost of living going up, gas and food and everything, like, wow, is that really a big help with anyone? Please feel free to look at the comments under Mr. Chuck McDonald, due to where saying, "Come on." Was that for the mayor to try to look good, like, "Oh, I'm really helping you by reducing your taxes by $25?" What, was that a joke or something? Please do feel free, I know all of you are on, all of you council members are on Facebook, and you're able to read the articles. But like I said, okay, I will move on. I will say, with far as with Code Blue, I will say, yes, I'm not going to say for sure, but as long as I know, I think it was a record-breaking of how many Code Blues that we did have. I will say thank you to all...
Thank you guys at Council on this more faces, more.
Well, one reason why I understand thank you, due to where I know some of the people who are here as volunteers, I would like to thank the volunteers and everyone. I will say thank you to Mr. Keith Jones for keeping it at 32 degrees this year, and that was the main reason why. Like I said, we're having so many, but yes, it was really worth it, due to where, like I said, record-breaking. Thank everyone for their help. But my question is, with the $90,000, due to where, are you talking about the $90,000 that was just recently received that from the county, maybe about two months ago, or...
This is a $90,000 grant that we received from Middlesex County. I'm not sure of the term of the date-to-date.
Well, I know, like I said, two months ago, we went through the county, so that's where, as Mr. Cradaville stated, was this enough meaning, due to where, is this the $90,000 from then?
Yes.
Two months ago? Or did you already have money? Is what I'm trying to understand?
This is the grant funded from Middlesex County that's in, I believe, in the anticipated line for the coming, since we're 2022.
Okay, well, like I said, God bless for everyone's help who did help on it. Like I said, I know it was a lot of days, and I will say, not to mention everyone's name, but I will say, main person that I really saw so many times, I can't mention anyone's name, but I give it out to Cheryl Smith, due to where, like I said, as I was over there donating hand warmers to keep, I did see her over there plenty of times. But like I said, thank you. Due to where, we're talking about a big budget, I hope to see that, due to where I didn't get a chance to read the budget, I hope to see something including up with cleaning New Brunswick up, due to where, how, yes, I know you just said you had a cleanup down that Boyd Paul Park, due to where, wow, please go back down there today. You'll see how dirty it is still down there, due to where people are dumping concrete, black top, please, polluting the water, please. I think it's time for you council members, even Mr. Shannon and these inspectors, to take a walk around New Brunswick, what needs to be really done, other than thinking about what, Rutherford Johnson, Rutgers, and all these other places? Because like I said, that river is contaminated down there, and you can't tell me, due to where, like I said, all of you are on Facebook, where I will show you the photos, how many dead wild fish, it's killing the wildlife down there. Please, will you please include that, go out and clean that park up? Thank you for the volunteers who do get, did get the garbage up. But like I said, and Mr. Jones wouldn't believe me, where I showed him the video, I said, "Oh, I'm going to date it for you." Please, look at all this garbage still down here. When I say clean up, wow, you can afford $4.5 million to redo Feastus Park, please, come on. Get some workers, what, when the tide goes out, get all of that garbage and trim down there, cut down there, please. I think it's time for some of you to really start walking around, you can't, you got to keep your eyes on the road when you drive, but come on. Someone's really dumping crap down there, and you say, due to where, the mayor did not take me seriously, what, to show all the dead fish, what, for him to, what? Oh, tell people, come down June 4th, advertise it today, come down and go fishing to the Rarleton River. Please, what type of people, do we really have people that care for us? Or what, it's all about money? That's very heartbreaking, what I'm saying, 45 years living in New Brunswick, never seen it this way, so please, my number-one thing with the budget, come on, start getting on these residents cleaning, please, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moore. There is money in the budget to keep the city clean, and as far as only reducing taxes by $25, it's commendable that we can put forth the budget that does this without eliminating any services to the city, especially in the economy today. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on the budget? Hello, please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record.
Okay, my name is Brittany Richardson, my last name is R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S-O-N. I live on Livingston Avenue in New Brunswick. I'm also the local union representation for the local union on the way, and I'm a driver and also a laborer for this Department of Sanitation for the city of New Brunswick. So, as far as the budget, this is my first meeting. Most of the time when I try to inquire about these meetings, they try to deter me from coming down here, because I know a lot of information that a lot of these other people may not know, as far as the budget, not having any money to actually pay the people that do try to keep the city of New Brunswick clean.
Thank you.
You know, we do, I have lots of pictures here with the illegal amounts of garbage. I've been taking pictures, videos, and voice recordings of the discrimination that also goes down at the Department of Public Waste, and I'm also speaking to a couple people down at City Hall. I am the first woman, and not only first woman, the first African-American woman, driver to ever work for your company. I have never felt welcomed, and I do not make enough money throughout your budget or whatever you're saying, to be paid to do the work that you guys have us doing in the city. Also, speaking, you know, with the illegal amounts of garbage, we noticed that Rutgers has paid the city of New Brunswick millions of dollars for the Rutgers move-out that's actually currently in standing right now, also with bulk pickups. When they do dump these illegal garbage down there, we have to go pick it up, and then they tell us that they don't want to pay us overtime. There's so many construction companies, I've been hurt, people have been hit by cars. We've had residents attack us with no contact to the police, because we're not allowed to use our cell phones while we're working. The discrimination is very horrible, it's not, it doesn't feel comfortable to work for this company. We are unsafe. Nobody's checking the safety of the equipment that we use. The equipment is very old. The equipment breaks down. I have videos and pictures and anything that you can think of, way more than I have here, and I'm not going to stop until you guys are exposed for the things that are not being done down at the City of Sanitation Department of Public Waste. It is disgusting, the bathrooms are disgusting, we are overlooked, like slaves. They don't pay attention to anything. Where's the budget going into that building? Mice running around, bathrooms old, outdated, the trucks are horrible, they're leaking garbage in the streets. If any of the garbage that leaks from those unsafe trucks that shut off in the middle of the road, tires pop, if I hit anyone, I'm responsible, but the city is not responsible. So, where in the budget do you guys see trying to help us? Nobody is coming down here to say anything, and I have to be the one to do it. It's pretty embarrassing, and I haven't heard anything with the budget as far as helping our facility. There is no proper bathrooms, there is no proper equipment, there is no, if there's an emergency, this happens. If we work overtime, that's complained about. I'm picking up just my truck, at least 19 tons of garbage twice in a day, and there are four complete rats for the city. So, can you imagine how much garbage that is manually picking it up? We're even picking up schools twice a day, once in the morning, once in the afternoon. They are supposed to have front-load garbage loaders with dumpsters. That's what they're supposed to have, but we're picking it up off of the ground, twice a day, every day a week, downtown, picking up garbage seven days a week. The rule is 50 pounds per bag, and it's well over that. These pictures can prove that. I have pictures, I have audio, I have video showing that what we deal with every day is overlooked by your budget, and I'm trying to figure out with those millions of dollars that Rutgers pay you guys to pick up all the students from the off-campus housing, what do they do with that? Because we're not being paid that. We haven't got any kind of increase, and then when we do get a pay raise, the insurance goes up, so they take the money right back. You guys contract Central Jersey Waste or Solterra to come and pick up your recycling, and you're paying them two or three times more than you're paying us, and we work for this city. I work for this city, and I could barely afford to live in this city. I've been living in the city for one month, due to the fact that nobody would accept me to live here, because we don't make enough in the city of New Brunswick.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you for having me talk, and come down here and speak to them. Maybe the feelings would hurt them, they do the right thing.
Mr. Jules, would you wish to comment on this?
Sure. Ms. Richardson made some points, and I think she'd be interested to know that this budget includes for purchase of roll-out carts, which is going to make it much easier to bring the carts from the curb to the truck, easier on the backs of those doing work. There's a new sanitation truck in here, a dumped, a new dump truck, a new eight-yard pop truck, and $95,000 for building improvements for public works, and so, so these things are on their way?
Thank you.
May I ask something? If I may, Mr. Jules, some of what you will share with us tonight is concerning to me, so if you could please keep us informed?
Sure.
Regularly on what's going on, especially in the building, some of the things that can be addressed right away, in terms of the bathrooms or anything else that might be happening, if you could just conduct our own investigation and see how can we address it, if those are in fact is happening within the department, please.
I will follow up on that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on the budget? Seeing none, the public hearing on the 2022 municipal budget is now closed.
You want a motion for that, Council Clerk?
Motion to close, second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
The public hearing on the 2022 municipal budget is now closed, observing no further applicants. I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, sorry.
It's okay, you jumped the gun on it. Next, we have approved amendments of the City of New Brunswick 2022 budget. At this time, I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-052200A to approve amendments of the City of New Brunswick 2022 budget.
By the municipal council, whereas the local municipal budget of the year 2022 was approved on the 6th day of April 2022, and whereas the public hearing on the said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget now, therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the City of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, that the following amendments to the approved budget of the 2022 be made. We have miscellaneous revenues, total section G, utility operating surplus of prior year water, $750,000, to utility operating surplus of prior year sewer, $750,000. Be it further resolved that the certified copies of this resolution be filed with the Office of the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for his certification of the 2022 local municipal budget so amended.
No, we need to open this up to the public, sir. If anybody from the public would like to speak on this resolution only, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes, one time up.
Yes, good evening. This is on the school levy?
No, this is on amendments to the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll speak at the next one.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none?
Motion to close, second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Next, we have the City of New Brunswick Resolution to adopt the 2022 budget.
Council President, at this time, I will read Section 2, the adopted resolution for the 2022 municipal budget. Be it resolved by the council members of the City of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, that the budget here and before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations and an authorization of the amounts of (a) $36,366,290... 60, I'm sorry, let me start over, apologize. (a) $36,366,298.47 for municipal purposes, and (b) $1,344,843 for school purposes in the type 1 school districts only, to be raised by taxation, and (z) $351,693.34 for open space, recreation, farmland, farmland, and historic preservation trust fund levy, and (s) $1,278,479 for minimum library tax.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Second.
Second.
I'd now like to open up for public comment.
Did that. That was a public...
It's all right.
I'm sorry.
So sorry.
It's all right.
Can I do the roll call?
Roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Secor Ludwig?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Next, we have the Resolution to Set Tax Levy for the Board of Education for 2022. At this time, I'll open it up for public comment on this resolution, only one time up, five minutes. Please just state your name and address.
Yes, good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I did attend the board meetings and see the presentation on the budget, and I supported it in the election. I wanted to know, though, if anyone can quantify the impact of the pilot payments on the school district? The fact that long-term tax exemptions have been given to 30-plus entities, the schools get nothing on the building taxes. I mean, that's just how it is. Could be millions of dollars that the district is missing out on. Has anybody bothered to add up how much?
I don't have a figure, but I will say, when these pilots come to fruition, and they're, after their time period is up, they do start paying into the taxes for the schools, so it doesn't, it does in fact raise money, even if it steps down.
But not for the schools?
After the pilot is over and they start paying.
Thirty years.
Right, but if there's different projects that are phased throughout the city in different times, they come to closure at different steps.
I'm just skeptical that these developers really need or deserve such a huge gift. It's corporate welfare, right? These are not people, these are corporations, and they are the beneficiaries of these deals to the tune of millions of dollars, and on the other end, the ones who are losing out on the money are the children of New Brunswick and the school district of New Brunswick. And I also wanted to speak a little bit on the Lincoln Annex situation. Obviously, the school was given away, and Robert Wood pledged to build a new one. What impact does that have on the budget? Is that quantifiable? What it means to have the kids in the warehouse school for years, the transportation costs? And I guess ultimately, the question that I still haven't gotten an answer from anybody is, who's on the hook if the $55 million doesn't cover it? Who's on the hook to finish the school project so we don't end up with another Renshaw school if the money runs out? Costs are rising for all kinds of things.
No, and I understand that, but I think that's a question for the Board of Ed.
Okay, well, I think it's their budget that's going to be affected if that money runs out, because if nobody else is saying they're going to do it, that means we're the sufferers who are going to have to do it. So, I hope it doesn't come to that, but I think it would be wise to come up with a contingency plan, because, you know, that deal was rushed through in the middle of the pandemic, and now... and now, you know, we're seeing costs rising and, you know, not a lot of accountability from the folks who said they were going to be accountable like Devco, like the M.C.I.A. And, you know, frankly, this council will be needed to be more proactive and, you know, look out for the next generation. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Hello, please state your names, but your last name for the record.
Marge Kerber, Two Comstock Street, I'm back in New Brunswick. And I just have a question about what you just talked to Charlie about, okay, on the levy. When was the last time a pilot was up and the and the school district benefited from?
I don't have that information.
Yeah, probably not in my lifetime.
This resolution is just for the Board of Education tax levy. This has nothing to do with the pilots at this point right now. I don't have that information.
You said that, you know, after the pilot's over, the school district benefits. When was the last time? Can anybody answer that? When was the last time that there was a pilot where the school district benefited? Probably not in your lifetime.
No, I think it was either last year or the year before. The Fox Lance pilot went into
Fox Lance?
Fox Lance went into full effect, fully taxable.
So it was last year.
And there are other pilots coming up now.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess Daniel Moore, I will continue what Mr. Cradaville was talking about on the budget due to where I know we were told that the fifty-five million dollars was to go to the school only. And due to where, you know, I'm a person where I know especially about safety concerns due to where I don't feel the main mayor or you council members take anything serious about safety. But I will say God bless the Mr. Ron Sanders due to where that is county property where, wow, he does take it seriously in helping someone from getting hurt. But like I said, I say it's going to be a lot of things that are going to have to be done. And like I said, it's already coming out the city and the county's pocket. And we all know that that's not no area for a school. And besides, one thing I will say, say, why you want to talk about a cost? Why, what, when is somebody going to do something due to where you're even doing construction work over there? Another thing, please take a view. How many homeless do you still living right, living right there by the school? Over thirty of them still living there. How are you even allowing this construction company to work there with all those homeless that are still over there? And plenty more now moved due to, due to where what? Come on! I think it's time for you council members to really start going through New Brunswick where you can see what I can see what's going on due to where I don't drive. But that's my main concern. When are you going to get all those homeless from out of there? And it's too dangerous due to where, please, go back there in your cissy. Even how they do the flyers to cook everything at home, all the beds, everything back there due to where the contractor told me, he called the police department. What, the police department never responded even to move them? So are you going to take matters and going to check it out what I'm saying?
Can you speak about the tax levy at this time only? If you have other comments, you can do it in a couple of minutes.
My comment is what, what does somebody have to pay? What to remove them, remove them from over there due to where all the stuff, if you still, all the garbage you're going to have to remove from over there as well? It's still about talking about what pay? Please, why don't you take a look and go over there due to where I can't print up every picture to show you, wow, how much garbage is over there and you still continue to allow it? But wow, you you talk about pay for for this and that, but wow, you still won't pay your workers who are busting their behinds? Come on, like I said, it's time for all of you to go due to where what? You're not doing the right thing. But please, I hope you do go over there and see my main concern between the garbage and like I said, all the homeless that are still over there, more and more, right where you're doing the school school. Where what? The railroad company, they blocked off Amtrak due to where they put the gate over. What, they just climb over and still over there? Come on, you're talking about like you're really doing the right thing. Honestly, you council members and Mayor Cahill are doing everything backwards and it's very heartbreaking to see this for our city. Like I said, I've been born and raised here forty-five years, never seen nothing like this before in my life. Like I said, it's time for all of you to go. And I surely miss Mr. Loveland. He was the number one being back here at City Council. I surely miss him due to where he was the main responsible one and had a heart to make sure everything was being done the correct way. Miss you, Mr. Loveland, wish you were here today.
Is there any other public comment on the school tax levy? Seeing none?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan? Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance for discussion on second reading. The first one is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title ten, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten point one six, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Section ten point one six point two one zero, Schedule three eight, Time Limit Parking Areas, and Section ten point one six point zero five zero, Schedule two nine, Time Limit Parking, Parking Meters, Hamilton Street. If anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please step up to the microphone. You have one time up for five minutes.
Good evening. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I wanted to ask the basics of what is changing here, what caused it to this. And I didn't happen to see a copy of the ordinance out there, maybe it is somewhere. But can you just tell me what what's changing and why?
Mr. Dominguez, please.
Uh, thank you. So you may recall last year, we expanded meter parking up until Line Street from Hamilton Street as there was a glut of parking on that block and to increase the turnover of that mixed commercial block post the development of the burb, we installed those meters. What this ordinance would do is on the Hamilton Street side of the burb, that block right now has, I believe, either fifteen-minute parking or two-hour parking. It's a time-limited parking that's currently being abused, mismanaged by people who park there. And one of the best ways to achieve appropriate parking turnover is to price parking adequately. And so this ordinance would meter that side of the block in order to create turnover of those parking spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Interesting to hear this characterized as abuse. What is, you know, presumably residents and visitors parking their car in a parking space. You know, that's what it's there for. Why, 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 why do we have to start charging people for it? Just because there's a tall building next to it? I don't see the connection between these two things. What prompted you to put this on your agenda tonight, Madam Councilwoman?
Mr. Dominguez would like to
And I, I take objection to that statement. The reason it's abuse is because people, whatever time limit parking is there, people are parking there twenty-four hours a day, twelve plus hours a day. It's either fifteen-minute or two-hour or a mix thereof on that site. And to park there all day when it's only a time-limited parking is abuse and is detrimental to the other people who need those spaces.
Okay, and so to be clear, there's going to be meters installed and six days a week, folks will have to pay to park there at the same rates everywhere else? That that's correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the parking authority has enough meters?
I assume. Is anyone there from the bar?
They'll be procuring them post the adoption of the ordinance should it be as likely.
Um, so so there will be a cost associated with with getting this up and running? How much?
I don't have that cost.
I would caution you not to approve the ordinance if you don't know the cost. Is there anybody here who could could tell us what the cost is going to be? Parking authority's not in great financial shape, is my understanding.
We don't, we don't have a cost for you, sorry, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay, well, then this ordinance should not be on the agenda tonight. I hope that you will not approve it. Take a little time and get the answers and then, you know, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a question just a week here. The meters will be cost us. It's the parking authority, so it's not our responsibility, regardless of one or the other. I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
I guess Daniel Moore, my my thing was due to where I heard Mr. Dominguez say that people are parking here too long. Then please, what is the parking authority short on staff due to where they don't have enough enough workers to go around and ticket the cars? Due to where I know that's even the same situation with street cleaning. So what is what is the parking authority doing due to where, like I said, I don't don't see plenty of cars being ticketed for not when you're supposed to be parking there? Please tell me what is the parking authority doing? Are they short on staff due to where, wow, now is this the main reason why did you have to do this? Because like I said, I even when it comes to street cleaning where signs tell you do not park here at a certain time. Well, the parking authority does not come around and give out tickets half the time. And honestly, that's the main reason why the city is so dirty due to where people don't move their cars. So please tell me, what is what is the parking authority doing?
I would assume the parking authority does do their job, but just because people receive a ticket does not mean they're not going to park there. And it may be a different person who pulls them to that spot and stays for twelve hours the next day. So, I mean, that that's not the answer. This is a comprehensive plan to take care of the problem.
Okay, well, now you said that even if they are ticketed, can you, for example, can you tell me how much a ticket were cost due to where if someone parks there and you get ticketed from the parking authority? How much does that cost?
I would have to look into that. I don't know.
And the reason why, the reason why I'm saying that due to where I'm pretty sure, 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 due to where the same person's not going to keep parking, parking there and what continue getting tickets on their on their record, what I would say, what about minimum twenty-five dollars compared to paying a meter? So like I said, really, at this point, I just say the parking authority is just short on staff and they don't have enough workers to keep up with all the parking and all due to where with all the construction, overpopulated, everything going on, they need to hire more staff to keep up with with the issues. Due to where half the time they're down here dealing with George Street with the road being closed off, what with parking people. So like I said, please, I hope you advise, instead of going with this, making people pay, I hope you advise the parking authority, they need to hire more workers because it's not just Hamilton Street that's going going through this. It's basically the whole whole New Brunswick. And like I said, that's the main reason why what New Brunswick can't get cleaned properly. What a great, what a great job of the street cleaners due to where what? If you're not, maybe not punished for what you're doing, you're going to continue to do it. But get on the parking authority. I don't think you should charge the residents what fees.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move your ordinance second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig?
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title sixteen, Land Development Code, Chapter sixteen point two for Site Plan Review. This is for minor site plan application fees. If anyone wishes to speak on this ordinance only, please step forward, state your name for the record.
Seeing none?
Move your ordinance second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Next, an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan for the New Brunswick Sears Redevelopment Plan area in the City of New Brunswick. If anyone wishes to speak on this ordinance only, please step forward. You have five minutes, one time up.
My time hiking up. You'll be able to get up there fast.
Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I wanted to ask if the council supports the current plan for seven hundred housing units on this site with zero affordable units? A few facts. I recognize that you had an item on your agenda last time for a long-term tax exemption for this developer, but that was pulled. And I want to say that's a good thing, that somebody pulled that from the agenda. It's even better that the New Brunswick Housing Authority actually failed to approve this developer, failed to designate them as the designated redeveloper at their most recent meeting. The vote failed by a vote of one to nothing with three extensions because some of the commissioners on the board shared my concern and perhaps some of your concern that we have a housing crisis in New Brunswick and housing costs way too much all over New Jersey. There's some good things that the city has done, like having a rent control ordinance. But to build seven hundred units and not have any of them affordable is not going to be good. It will continue to drive up rents and, of course, new buildings are exempt from rent control. So I really wanted your reaction to these things and I want to hear from you whether or not you support the developer's plan to have no affordable housing in this project.
As you're probably aware, I sit on the planning board, so I am unable to comment on this, but you will hear my opinion at the planning board meeting and I do have. But that's all I can say because I just can't look the conflict. I need to see the plans and I need to hear the presentation before I can make any comments.
I see. You're saying you're going to be sitting on a site plan application, so you don't want to?
Exactly.
Okay. How about the other members of the council? Do you care about this issue of of no affordable housing in this project?
Anyone wish to speak on this?
What I will say is that I, my understanding, if I look at our housing society, it's always a good thing that we are able to add that into the projects that we have, which we have done. I did inquire with the housing authority in terms of, and I believe that there was a forum. That's why the Indian vote, the vote wasn't there. There was some challenges with the commissioners being there. But I did, yeah, I was informed that even though there is no affordable units, I believe that they would be able to, those who have exceptional vouchers will be able, because there is exceptional vouchers, the amount will increase hopefully in the next few years. And they're able to rent there if they have exceptional, which is kind of an affordable housing. But I personally would like to see affordable housing units in the project. So that's, that's much I would say. I'll be honest, I have to look at the whole plan a little bit better to make a more informed decision. But I do support whenever we can and are capable to have affordable units in our projects.
Well, I hope that you can watch my recording of the meeting and you will see that the vote did fail, the vote to designate the redeveloper and only one commissioner supported the vote. Three others were there, which is enough for a forum, but they all abstained and they could not support this. So I applaud them for, you know, holding off on giving this designation since that's the type of thing that's used to then go through the tax exemption. And, you know, it used to be that there was at least an argument for the tax exemption because they'd be doing something, right? They do affordable housing, twenty percent of the units, okay, the city would give them a tax exemption. Maybe I would still be against it, but there would at least be something in it for the public. But what we've seen recently in the past, you know, four, four years or so is projects getting approved that have no affordable housing, no public amenities, and they're just developers trying to maximize profit and getting getting one over on New Brunswick and causing everybody else's rents to be, to have upward pressure on them. So I think that we really need to think twice about this ordinance. I hope that you will actually table it tonight and send a message to this developer that they're not going to get the approvals unless they actually have some affordable housing. I really hope that you listen to the recording because you'll hear them say comparable projects and market rates, sixteen or seventeen hundred dollars a month for a studio was the prices they were talking about. And zero affordable units out of seven hundred. That's just wrong. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cradaville. Ms. Moore?
Yes, Daniel Moore, I would just start off with saying, thank you, Mr. Cradaville, for your, for your work that you did speak on this. I'm glad, like I said, sometimes I don't think, I don't think the council takes too much seriously. And like I said, God bless, due to where you did speak up on the right thing, where they understood you. Because like I said, wow, now that I'm hearing seven hundred due to where I may, I hadn't been to the planning board, but at first I thought this was supposed to be townhouses, owner ownership.
There is, there is a piece of this project that is ownership.
Well, like I said, now Mr. Cradaville just updated me, but like I said, seven hundred units? Come on, New Brunswick is overpopulated already. If you're, if you're saying that, wow, you don't have enough staff to do inspections to make sure what, that you're really having what, five to six people in there and you've got thirty people in there? Please, we don't, we don't, we don't really need that. And I spoke on that before due to where, wow, I'm not really going to speak, but come on. Same people in charge, back then, you may sure, sure, sure that what, there was only so many people in the house. How, how are you, the more you keep building, you keep saying, oh, you don't have enough staff on inspection? That, wow, that New Brunswick isn't going to continue getting overpopulated? When I asked you, oh, how? When I asked you, what does it count in New Brunswick? You said fifty thousand. I know good and well that's not true. Like I said, forty-five years living here. And then what the young lady said, what? You'd never had to pick up garbage seven days a week, two times a day. So like I said, come on, due to where, what are you even building more for? Due to where, what, you've got too many homeless already and nothing affordable? And like I said, wow, for a two-bedroom apartment, wow, I was able to afford the sixteen forty-five. But wow, just to get in there, what, I had to make seventy-two thousand dollars just to qualify for a place? You're going to go through the same situation with this, due to where, what? You can afford it, but if you don't make a certain amount, nobody's going to get in there. And as Mr. Cradaville stated before, that's the same thing that happened to Fulton Square. So like I said, due to where, come on. If you can't keep up with the population already, what are you building seven hundred units in New Brunswick for? Any comments? You don't believe that New Brunswick is overpopulated already?
As I said before, I'm not commenting on this particular item tonight because I'm going to see it at the planning board. So I'm not going to comment specifically on this.
Because like I said, I think it's time for, like I said, some of you council members to really start taking a walk, or maybe every three weeks, to go with these inspectors, walk them through neighborhoods. And like I said, due to where I don't drive, you know, I don't walk to inspect. I walk because I can't, I walk a lot because I can't sit down for a long time. But come on, I think you really ought to go start walking to see what you see in your neighborhood. Due to where, wow, Rutherford Village is a long way from New Brunswick. Wow, over by St. Peter's Hospital, a long way to see what goes on in New Brunswick. But come on, seven hundred units, not going to be affordable? Just not right. Due to where, what? Like I said, it's not about how much the cost is. Please, tell me, like I said, what, why do you have to make seventy-two thousand dollars just to pay sixteen forty-five for rent? That's going to be a very huge issue. And it already is, due to where, what, the young lady from Iowa City working, they bust their bus, due to where, what, can't afford to stay here in New Brunswick? And I think, please, from your heart, I'm speaking from my heart, I hope you really look into it. How long have I been speaking on this? Due to where, how hard it is to really, what, stay here in New Brunswick? Please, the one thing I'm saying, the cost of the living, like I said, please, one thing I do say from my heart. Think about your workers who are really busting their behind that really wants to stay in New Brunswick.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move your ordinance second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Do we know it? Council President Secor Lovelace.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 5, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.80, Rent Control. For several proposed amendments, at this time, we're preparing to open for the public comment. You have one time up for five minutes only. Please step forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Veronica. Y venimos aquí, pertenecemos al programa de hogares saludables. Y somos parte del New Brunswick Healthy Community. También estamos colaborando con New Brunswick Tomorrow, el hospital Robert Wood Johnson, el hospital San Peter, y el departamento del condado de salud de Middlesbrough. Quisiera que permitan relatar un poco de nuestro trabajo y cómo hemos llegado hasta aquí. En 2018 empezamos a visitar los hogares de New Brunswick con la intención de saber cómo podemos tener un mejor entorno saludable en nuestras viviendas. Sin embargo, al escuchar a los residentes nos enteramos de muchos desacuerdos entre inquilinos y propietarios. Y una falta de conocimiento de parte de los inquilinos, los problemas de los servicios públicos incluidos, los cobros de agua, era un problema frecuentemente aquí en la ciudad de New Brunswick.
Good afternoon. Now we do the party. My name is Elmera Cordillo, and I live in Lower Place, New Brunswick. We would like to testify in support to this ordinance, especially Section 4 about utilities and water bills. We belong to the Healthy House Program, which is part of the New Brunswick Healthy Housing Collab, a collaboration between New Brunswick Tomorrow, New Brunswick, Robert Wood Johnson Hospital, San Peter Hospital, and the Middlesbrough County Department of Health. We would like to share a bit about our work and how we got to this point. In 2018, we began to visit New Brunswick houses with a goal of learning how we could create a environment in our homes. However, in listening to residents, we became aware a lot of conflicts between tenants and landlords, and a lack of information about many tenants. Problems with utilities, including water bills, were a frequent issue.
Después nos condujo a crear una asociación de inquilinos en colaboración con el proyecto Esperanza para educar y empoderar a los inquilinos. Nos pusimos a trabajar en el tema de los servicios públicos y como grupo elaboramos una petición con puntos estratégicos para mejorar la forma del cobro de una factura de agua.
Afterwards, that led us to create a tenant association in collaboration with Esperanza Neighborhood Project to educate and empower tenants. We began to work on the issue of utility bills. And as a group, we developed a list of strategic points to improve the rules around the water bills and charge.
Les enviamos al alcalde y al departamento de planificación de esta ciudad y nos dejaron saber que estaban ya trabajando con unas propuestas similares. Que estamos y estamos agradecidos que aceptaron la mayoría, la gran mayoría de nuestras recomendaciones.
We sent it to the mayor and the department of planning, and they let us know that they are already working on similar proposals. We are very grateful that accept that, the pass of majority of all recommendations.
La propuesta incluida en sección cuatro de la ordenanza es muy fuerte. Hace más claro las responsabilidades del pago de los servicios públicos y esto ayudará a evitar las quejas y confusiones que han sido muy comunes. Por eso respetamos, por eso esperamos que ustedes tomen en consideración la voz de estos residentes de New Brunswick para mejorar la equidad del pago del servicio de agua y voten a favor de la ordenanza. En el futuro, nos gustaría seguir trabajando con la ciudad, ya que somos un grupo de residentes, que nos gustaría disminuir las barreras entre los propietarios e inquilinos. Ahora quisiéramos que escucharan un testimonio más adelante.
We sent it to the mayor, the department, I'm sorry, I said that far. The proposal includes a section four of the ordinance is very strong. It makes our responsibilities for paying utilities much clearer and will help to avoid the complaints and confusion that have buried in common. So we hope that you take into consideration the voice of these residents of New Brunswick, improve to the fairness of water and utility charge to vote in favor of this ordinance. In the future, we would like to continue working with the city as a group of residents that would like to decrease the barriers between tenant and landlords. Now, we would like to you to hear testimonies about a member of the tenant association.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Ricardo Garcia, vivo en La Baldwin.
Good afternoon, my, good evening, my name is Ricardo Garcia, I live on Baldwin Street.
Soy miembro del proyecto Esperanza y también del grupo de inquilinos de hogares saludables.
I'm a member of the Esperanza Project and also of the Tenant Association, supported by the Healthy Housing Program.
Con permiso voy a leerles porque se me olvida.
If you, let me, I'd like to read, so I don't forget.
Me gustaría compartir más sobre la ordenanza y por qué la vemos como un cambio muy positivo.
I'd like to share more about the audience and why we, about the ordinance and why we see it as a positive change.
En muchas viviendas, las facturas de agua han sido fuente de confusión y conflicto.
In a lot of housing, the water bills have been the source of confusion and conflict.
Sabemos que hay muchos propietarios responsables, pero desafortunadamente algunos propietarios ven los cargos de agua como un pretexto para evitar los límites de control de renta.
We know that there are many responsible landlords. However, unfortunately, some landlords see water charges as a pretext or excuse to avoid rent control limits.
En varios casos, en nuestro grupo, los propietarios agregaron un nuevo cargo de agua sin previo aviso y sin reducir la renta.
In many cases within our group, landlords added a new water charge without advance notice and without reducing the rent.
En otros casos ponen cargos arbitrarios sin enseñar una factura de la ciudad.
In other cases, they've added new arbitrary water charges without showing water bills from the city.
Esta ordenanza aclara los deberes del pago de agua y no permite que los dueños pongan cargos inesperados o injustos.
This ordinance clarifies the responsibilities for water payment and does not permit landlords to add unexpected or unfair water charges.
También va a ayudar a reducir los conflictos entre inquilinos.
It also is going to help to reduce conflicts between tenants.
Como sabemos, en New Brunswick, hay muchas casas divididas en dos o más apartamentos.
As we know, in New Brunswick, there are many houses that are divided into two or more apartments.
Pero no todas estas casas tienen medidores de agua separados.
But not all of these houses have separate water meters.
Lo que puede generar problemas cuando no está claro cómo se deben dividir los cargos de agua.
And this can cause problems when it's not clear how those water charges should be divided.
Esta ordenanza establece normas claras y justas para dividirlos.
This ordinance establishes clear and fair rules for dividing them.
Yo participé en las reuniones de inquilinos cuando desarrollamos las recomendaciones y me alegro de que casi todos estén incluidos en esta propuesta.
I participated in the tenant meetings when we developed these recommendations, and I'm happy that almost all of them were included in the final proposal.
Finalmente, esta ordenanza hará que todos, tanto inquilinos como propietarios, seamos más conscientes de nuestro uso del agua.
Finally, Viv's ordinance will also make sure that everyone, tenants as well as owners, are more conscious of our use of agua, of water.
Tenemos que cuidar nuestros recursos naturales de manera justa.
We have to take care of all natural resources in a just manner.
Gracias por su atención.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Veronica.
Good afternoon, my name is Veronica.
Estoy de acuerdo con lo que dijo la señora sobre los medidores de cada apartamento. Eso está pasando aquí en New Brunswick, tenemos ese problema.
And I'm in agreement with what the previous person said about water meters, that we have that problem in New Brunswick with in houses that don't have separate water meters.
Aquí hay muchas casas que son de dos plantas y cada casa tiene solo un medidor de agua. Y necesitaríamos de que cada planta tenga su medidor de agua. Porque no es justo a veces que en la planta de arriba viva más gente que en la de abajo y estemos pagando igual.
And so what we, in a lot of houses that have, for example, two floors but only one shared water meter, but there might be more people in one floor than the other and using more water, but the bills are, the water charges are just divided equally, which in those cases is not fair.
Bueno, eso es mi punto de vista, gracias.
And that's my perspective, my viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance only?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Fidela Franco.
Good afternoon, my name is Fidela Franco.
Yo tengo dieciséis años viviendo en esa casa. Hasta ahorita este año cambiaron de dueño y me están cobrando mucho de agua. No sé por qué.
I've been living in the same house in New Brunswick for sixteen years. And just this last year, the owners changed, and they started charging me water for the first time.
El primer mes me cobraron quinientos dólares y me subieron treinta dólares de la renta.
The first month, they charged me five hundred dollars as a water charge, as well as raising my base rent by thirty dollars.
Entonces, y este mes me cobraron ciento sesenta y siete.
And this month, they charged me a hundred and seventy-five.
Entonces yo no entiendo el porqué, nunca había pagado yo algo.
And so it's been hard for me to understand, because previously I'd never paid water before in the house.
El nuevo dueño lleva seis meses en la casa y hasta ahorita estoy pagando agua. Seis meses y seiscientos setenta es mucho para mí. Nosotros vivimos cinco personas.
And so in the six months that I've paid water, those times, that's a lot for me. To the five of us in my family that live there, it's a lot to have to take on that new charge.
Yo no sé si ustedes pueden hacer algo o mandarle carta a cada dueño o cambiar los medidores, porque en el primer piso viven más gente.
I'm not sure what you all can do as council in the city to inform, advise, send a letter to the landlord, or force them to get a water meter because there are a lot of occupants on the first floor.
Okay, gracias por hacer mi pregunta y espero su contestación.
Thank you. That's my question. I look forward to your response.
Danielle Moore, I surely will agree with all the, what the tenants were saying, due to where that is a very huge situation, due to where, and I will say why. Due to where, when it comes to inspection, due to where, wow, and you can't say, what is not recorded? That I did not mention to you this before, due to where, what? How these are single-family houses and how you're letting these inspectors pass illegally, changing them over to two-family houses. And I will say that, due to where, even though I mentioned it at the last meeting, the situation with my sister's house, well, wow, how in the world did it pass inspection? Mom and I mentioned his name, and inspectors, wow, the next two weeks they go over there and redo the whole kitchen, due to where they didn't want me to show the pictures. But come on, but come on, I don't see how the city is allowing this. Like I said, you didn't do it back in the day. Why are you allowing it now? If this was a one-family house and it doesn't have the proper meters, and the same thing, due to where, wow, you can even look at the police report with my sister's house. Well, not my sister's house, but where she lives. Due to where this was originally one-family house, how he turned forty-two carstuffs into a two-family house. My sister kept saying, ooh, why am I getting a bill of six hundred dollars? Six hundred dollars, even for the electricity and the water? And wow, they never got a bill downstairs, until kept arguing, calling the police so much, until they finally came over with the police department and inspectors to show, wow, this was only an original one-family house illegally turned over to a two-family house. And the city needs to stop doing that. Due to where, how they check, wow, they turn the lights off upstairs. Wow, how, what, you wouldn't see the electricity down there, but like I said, due to where it's all on record with the inspectors and with the police department, due to where, like I said, it's causing too many situations, like, wow, if it's five of you, you're using more power or water downstairs, why should I pay more upstairs? See, one thing, I will say, I go through the same thing now, due to where I'm staying at, on Somerset Street. But one thing, due to where it says on my lease, ooh, my payment plus the water bill. But due to where I pay water bill, my rent is lower than, what, come on, for a three-bedroom apartment? Not to really give out my information. Wow, you wouldn't get that for no fifteen, twenty a month? But due to where I do have to pay for water, but like I said, it was a concern. Like, wow, I don't use as much water as you downstairs. And like I said, a lot of these places in New Brunswick, and why are you allowing it?
If you understand, this ordinance is addressing those issues. So it is in support of trying to do something about it. So no one's allowing it, we're trying to fix issues.
Well, you allowed this for so many years. I thank you, that I do see this, because like I said, I see it happening too much in New Brunswick, due to where you're allowing these own owners to illegally do things that, come on, even... you allowing these own owners to illegally do things that, come on, even a bedroom shouldn't even be passing for, for where it used to be the living room, how they, they'll tell you it's a bedroom. And you can't say I haven't mentioned it to you several times on different things. But like I said, thank you, I'm glad to see something will be done. But like I said, hopefully you can make sure that it still continues around New Brunswick the right way.
The city does not allow these illegal conversions. People break the law all the time, and they do so with this. When they are inspected, the inspector doesn't go in and allow it. There may be situations too where there's a two-family house that was legally converted that you don't know about, even though it doesn't appear to be a normal two-family home. So there's different, there are different instances with this. But it's not something that was just allowed and rushed under the law.
Well, you know me, when I speak, I prove, due to where I will bring pictures of several houses down, down here to show you how it was illegally turned into, to, to, and like I said, how, how does it pass inspection? Like I said, how did my sister's place pass inspection? What, the moment I said I'd bring the pictures down, ooh, the inspectors made sure they went back over there and what, what, they did everything. So like I said, due to where, honestly, New Brunswick inspection is doing a very poor job of making things to go right, due to where, I wonder why. Even though I know the real reason why, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say, but like, like I said, you didn't do it back then, why are you doing it now? But like I said, I'm glad to see, I hope it continues to go, go around New Brunswick, because it's too many ripoffs with these landlords.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Please state your name again for the record.
Hi, I'm Brittany Richardson. Once again, I work with the Department of Public Ways. I'm gonna agree with them and say that the proper water meters will really help out, especially for my job, because most of the time the city inspectors will count water meters or the electricity meters in order to let the families know how much appropriate garbage they're supposed to put out per house. And when there are multiple families with not the appropriate meters, they tend to put more garbage out. And then they get the tickets for the illegal amounts of garbage, due to the fact that there are not the appropriate amount of water meters. And I feel like it will really help our department if you guys kind of look into that. Also, that also adds more garbage to us with no increase in pay. And then on top of that, with more families and less water meters, we're still dealing with the COVID, and we were not offered hazard pay as well either. So that kind of affects, makes a snowball effect with everything else. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Can anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance only? Seeing none?
May I have, I just want to make a quick comment, because I know we, I think that most of our are agreeing that this is an excellent opportunity for us to address the challenges that the residents are saying. But I just want to say that, that, like I always say, I am very grateful for the community comes together and to look for solutions, right? Because sometimes we look for problems, but we don't, we are not part of the solution. So working with us, you know, in the city, this is what I always say, that is the best way. The city cannot be everywhere, inspectors cannot be everywhere, as much as we, we could hire 30, and we still wouldn't be able to accommodate the amount of people that we have in the city. Regardless of that, whether we have 10, 20, or 40, I think that it's important for the community to be involved, for the community to make sure that we work together again to address these situations that sometimes we don't even know, or that. So coming together again, we have done this in the past. Thank you, Esperanza. Thank you, Obras Salubles. Because this is the way that we should be working as a community together to resolve issues in a, in a way that is beneficial for everyone, everyone. Not only by bringing up the problem, but also working with us to find solutions that are good. Quiero darle las gracias una vez más a Esperanza, Ludo de Esperanza y Obras Salubles, porque una vez más estamos, están dando ejemplo de cómo es una comunidad debe trabajar, ¿no? Trabajar todos unidos con el mismo propósito, trabajar con ustedes como residentes, con el gobierno, con la ciudad, para poder lidiar con algunas cosas que están sucediendo en la ciudad, que puede ser que tengamos mil trabajadores y no vamos a poder lograr resolverlos todos. Pero con más ojos, con más personas que están pendientes, con más ustedes que están trabajando por el beneficio de todos, ¿no? Y están cierto, y no solo están trayendo el problema, sino que están ofreciendo y trabajando para dar una solución, que no mucha gente hace eso. Les agradezco y sigamos trabajando, como lo hemos hecho anteriormente con otras ordenanzas de la ciudad. Esta es la manera de llevar a nuestra ciudad para adelante y seguir adelante como comunidad, una sola comunidad con el mismo propósito de mejorar la calidad de vida de todos nosotros que vivimos aquí. Son muchas gracias.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember, Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sekora Ludluk. Yes. Next, we'll move on to the resolutions. Do you have any comments?
No, yes.
What?
Council President, matter of housekeeping, though. We do have a ordinance on first reading. In connection with that ordinance, should it be so adopted on first reading, you'll need to designate a time for public hearing. Resolution four on your consent agenda moves the meeting times to the summer hours of 5:00. So therefore, if you would like to move with respect to that resolution first, then move back to your first reading ordinance. That may make better sense for purposes of setting the time for public hearing.
Okay, so we'll look at resolution number four. It's an approved amendment of resolution R-012201 to change the meeting start time to 5:00 p.m. for the period May 18th, 2022, to September 7th, 2022. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this resolution only for 5 minutes one time only?
Good evening, Council President Charlie Cradville of New Brunswick today. Can you tell me what motivated the council to move the start time of the meetings?
I guess it's been common practice for us to have summer hours and this remains consistent with that.
I disagree. I believe that the practice had been 5:30, not 5:00. I believe Councilwoman Escobar was the one who made that request once upon a time. That's what it's been until recently, until now.
Well, it wasn't about the time. It was a half-hour difference for summer hours.
Right, so the meetings are creeping forward in the day. And I'll be, I'll be frank with you. 5:00 p.m. for me is actually a better time, so I'm gonna do my best to attend as many of these meetings as possible.
Of course.
But I think for most working people, the earlier in the day you have it, the harder it is for them to make it. And generally, like the towns that I, I often attend other meetings, those meetings often don't start until 7:00 or later. And they're well-attended, and as I've mentioned, they even have the police director come to the meeting and talk about things. So I think that we should be moving the meeting times. If, if, if we're moving them at all, they should move in the other direction. Even though it would be a little bit harder for me, I think it would be best for the community to have the, the meetings be later. And, you know, while we're on the topic, I do, I would ask you to please allow remote access to the meetings. Some towns are doing this, and it works very well. You know, I was able to speak to the Perth Amboy City Council from my desk in New Brunswick, and there's nothing wrong with that. I think anything you can do to make it easier for the public to access these meetings, to watch these meetings live in real time. You know, I noticed tonight that the camera's not even being turned to show the public, so I think the people at home deserve better. They deserve to see who the speaker is. They deserve to be able to call in and speak themselves. Even better, using modern technology like Zoom, which this council never has used yet. I think that, you know, I'm going on and on, so I'll shut up, but I hope you, I hope you will consider, truly consider remote access for, for not only yourselves but the public. Thank you.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, was there a directive where you have to have either or that went into place during COVID?
There was.
Right, so you're not supposed to have both. It can either be, everybody has to be in person or everybody has to be in room.
What, what is the citation? What, what, what order of law are you talking about?
I don't have the citation. I, I can't read that. This is the information that I was given. And these are the way we conduct our meetings. They're in person, and we're not gonna do a hybrid.
Why not?
Because we have everybody in person here. If you want, do you want us to go back to all telephonic?
No, I want you to do both. I thought it was clear.
No, this is the way we're doing our meetings, and I will look into that information about the directives that I heard about.
Okay, yeah, please follow up with me.
We have councilmembers calling, and they're not present in meetings.
Excuse me, you're speaking out of order. If you'd like to come up and speak, you can come up with your name, and that is false. That is false in the, in the past two years. We do not do that anymore. We couldn't even do it at the last meeting, but you can wait your turn. Ms. Moore, go ahead.
All right, well, first I will say, we'll take Mr. Cradville. Please tell me why the camera is only on you guys and not, not everyone else is being recorded.
You're being recorded verbally, and you should be addressing the councillor all the time.
But no, that's not how the, how the meetings we used to, really used to be. Please tell me, what, 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 are you embarrassed of what the people are saying about our chair?
Any questions about the meeting schedule change to 5:00?
Obviously, I say that's a little too early, due to where some people don't get off of work till 4:00, 4:30, due to where the only, the difference with you, changing the time before with summer hours, that was when it was 6:30. And then you changed it to 6, to 6:00, but I said, well, you're changing from 5:30 to 5, to 5:00. Come on, I really think you're just doing that, what, because the less people you have here, so maybe you miss President Ludluk, so you can get out of here sooner? That, that's the way I, I see it, due to where you're the main one always rushing to try to get forward, to get out of here, even, even on some call.
I'm not rushing, I'm not rushing anything. I really, really listen.
Well, I would now say you're not. Thank you, Jesus, on that, due to where, but I, 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 time, due to where you would be the main one to rush to get out of here. And I say, what, and that's the way I see it. Well, you're making time earlier, what, for less people, so you can get out of here earlier?
Just because the time is earlier doesn't mean that the meeting will be shorter. So I don't know what the correlation is there to rushing through a meeting. Because it's not gonna make the meeting time any shorter. We're still gonna conduct all our business. So it doesn't, that doesn't.
Like I said, even some of your employees, your staff, staff that be, 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 be here, due to where, are they really gonna be able to make it here on time? Due to where, what, what, what time does City Hall close here? So, so, so please, will anyone get a chance to really even go home, basically, any engineer, anyone from different departments? Will they be able to come to the meeting?
Absolutely. This is all taken care of with the administration and the employees.
So anyone who does not work in this city, who does the City Hall building, where, and like I said, that attends every meeting, well, you, you think 30 minutes going through the traffic will allow them to, to be here, get here on time at the meeting? So we will have our questions answered?
Yes, it's part of their job to be here.
Like I said, not, not good at all. I think you're just doing this, due to where you're the main one who always likes to get out of the meetings quicker and not even rereading every ordinance the, the full. And like I said, I, I, I've noticed that. You were the only president ever to do that, not to read, ooh, little, little by little, what, just to hurry up and get out, get out of here. I say that's why you're really changing it to 5:00, because less people, which is sad.
Your entire team, next.
Carlos Ramirez, R-A-M-I-R-A-C, New Brunswick, Terry Porter. I think you mentioned that in the past ten years, nobody has ever rang in any of the board members.
This is about this particular?
Well, you asked me to come up to address this, so I will address that.
Now, in the past two years, over the pandemic, since there was a new directive last year, it went to the fact that we couldn't have a council member calling. Prior to that, we did, because there was no ruling on that, and we didn't have any information. That excluded us from doing that. Once those, once we went into effect and we went remote, we had to do it either all remote or all in person.
Yeah, I get that point that you mentioned, but prior to any of the pandemic starting.
Yes.
We did. I remember that there was a member, I can't recall, hope, but you know, like we mentioned cameras, they record everything. I do remember there was a member, I think, I'm not sure if they were running late or they were not present, and they rang in, and that's where they spoke to us. But you know, it was on a call.
And that's what I just explained. That happened several times. It was something that we used, we used to be able to do, but we're no longer able to do that from the pandemic on.
Yeah, and based on the times, you know, 5:00 for me, I honestly, I personally feel careless about the time that you wanna do the meetings. But I think it's easier and convenient for other city members, especially Councilwoman Rebecca, she was mentioning that, you know, it's good to work between the community and city government and any other residents members or any public that wants to come and address and work together. I think if you want to invite more people, I think you should work and you should have conducted interviews with many members that come here or any general public on Facebook or any type of social media, or send out letters to see what time works for them, you know? It's not just about what time works for the council members or what sounds more convenient. Sure, many city employees, you know, like the lady we had today come, she's a city employee. I've never seen many city employees come up and speak on their opinion and what they think about their work situation. So I think if many employees leave the buildings at 4:00 and stay a bit longer, maybe they can even make it to 5:00. And I think maybe that would be more convenient to get more people work for the city to speak up about what they think about their employment here and the situation. And it's really sad that many people don't make enough, you know, to even be able to attend these meetings, because they gotta work extra hours or even work for the city and still can't even live in the city that they serve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I just want to make something clear. And historically, and I'm, and I'm not saying that it could change, or it had changed. Historically, the time that we started meeting doesn't affect the amount of people that we have here, the attendance, the attendance of the public. Because we always have the same amount of people here, whether it's at 5:00, 5:30, or 6:00, 6:30, we always have the same people here. Later, it doesn't mean that we will have more people. Soon, you know, earlier, it doesn't have, that historically, it doesn't make any difference. Nonetheless, I, I think that this council is willing to see, let's see what happens. And if we start seeing, you know, people more coming, that is, you know, more at 5:00 or more at 6:00, then we'll take it from there. But historically, it hasn't made, we have to be honest with ourselves. It hasn't made a difference, the time that this meeting starts. I just want to make that clear.
Can I have a motion for the resolution?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sekora Ludluk. Yes. Now we'll go back to ordinance on first reading, one and ordinance to amend and supplement, regards general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, page 10. Vehicles and traffic, chapter 10.20, handicap parking, session 10.20.010. Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons, and 8, Lake Street.
Move the ordinance setting down May 18th at 5:00 p.m. Same thing to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sekora Ludluk. Yes. Now we'll move on to the resolutions. If any member of the public would like to speak on the resolutions, you can come up for one time, 5:00 p.m. Please state your name.
Good evening, Charlie Cradville. Start with number 13 on page four. What is Mo Geo LLC accusing the city of, and why, you know, why are they suing us?
I believe this is a tax matter, and is there anything like the address of Mr. James?
Yes, it involves the ability to foreclose on tax sales statistics for JIF. And it's, it's not covered by the JIF, so, yeah, we assign it to special counsel who specializes in these particular areas. And actually, the matter is still pending.
Thank you.
Same page, number 16. What is the COPS grant for? Is this just gonna hire more officers or?
Yeah, they're, they're applying for this grant for 12 officers, and it covers 75% of the salaries. I believe over three years of the 25% city match. And we're not sure we're gonna get it all, but they're applying for 12 officers, or cover, some of their fringe benefits would be covered, as well as their salaries.
So I see here, it says the DOJ Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. So what is in the grant about being community oriented? What is the city promising to do with these officers? Or are there no, no promises besides just hiring?
Well, I know it can be used for overtime, training, equipment, uniforms, and vehicles.
How is that community oriented?
Or those, we hire, like, overtime is not included, I believe, I'm sorry. Officer Goldskey, do you know any specifics of this?
I don't, I don't have the narrative for the application.
Okay, so no one can say what is community oriented about these 12 new hires that I presume are already in the pipeline or coming along?
Well, I think any officer and his job, I think it's a community-oriented job. There is nothing specific with this grant that's something I have to do. There's no certain program for this, it's for the hiring and salaries.
That seems like kind of a fraud. No, no offense, not to you, but if the program is called that, and there's no requirement for there to be anything community oriented about it, I think that this I think that this is deceptive. I haven't heard anything community oriented. I hear vehicles and overtime, maybe, I, I hear, you know, hiring new police, but what is community oriented about it? Why is this grant the one that the city is reaching out for? And, 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 you know, more broadly, what can the city do to actually be community oriented with the police?
The, the language directly from the grant is implementing or supplementing a community policing program. I'd be glad to sound more detailed if you'd like for the next meeting.
Please.
So we have a community policing program?
Mr. Dules is going to give us the information, I'll come back to the next meeting.
Okay, it's news to me. I, I know there's always promises, every so often, they say, oh, we're going to have New Brunswick officers ride around with Rutgers officers. They do it for a few weeks, they stop doing it. We're going to have them on the bike, they're going to ride bicycles around town. They do that for a few weeks, then they stop doing it and go back to the old way. So I don't think that this is effective, but I'll move on to thirty-two, this Livingston Avenue project. Why hasn't the city taken steps to install bus shelters at the bus stops? We went to millions of dollars to make Livingston Avenue so beautiful, but the places where the bus stops don't have shelters. To my understanding, NJ Transit will provide the shelter for free if the city agrees to maintain it.
This is about the bike lanes, if you'd like to speak about the shelters of the public comment.
Well, I, I think that getting people to use methods of transportation other than cars is a stated goal of that project. The bike lanes are good, but I, I really need to, need to know, I need to understand why, because I'm across the street at the county meetings and they say, yep, we've got the, it's ready to go, but it's up to the city to put the shelters in, and, and they're still not in. You see people sitting on a, sitting on the curb, you know, waiting for, waiting for the bus, and, you know, we're not doing any, we're not doing enough to incentivize people to come here and get around without a car. So, of course, everybody's got to bring their car, and that, you know, causes all sorts of problems. So I, I think that, you know, the Livingston Avenue project is not yet done, and the city has not done its, its part to actually, you know, make it easier to ride a bus. I want to ask about the last one, what is up with this sewer backup, apparently on Goodell Circle? Not too far from you, what, what, what happened?
There was a power malfunction and water and sewer, the low level houses there, and so they needed to be cleaned and there needed to be some remediation and things are reimbursed for that. And everything is going to go through the normal process now of maybe a verification for resources.
Okay, well, whose fault was it? Was it just too much rain or?
I believe it was malfunctioning, it was just a, a, a equipment malfunction.
Okay, cause for concern, thank you.
One more question?
Last one, sewer backup.
Oh, thank you. Well, first, I would like to start off with sixteen. I know Sergeant Nering did announce to me saying that there was a shortage with police officers, but I know good and well, as many police cars as I see, I'm still not understanding, wow, where you see more police car, car cars, who, the police officers, wow, you have, even if you have a day off, due to where, wow, you consider making ninety-three dollars an hour just to sit on the corner and instead of taking care of the community, due to where, I, can, can you please tell me how many officers that work, work every shift? That, how many officers do you have, have working a shift?
This is, this resolution is for a grant, and you're applying for twelve officers.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm wondering what? Well, I still want, so, so you can't tell me, explain to me my meaning of, what is your reason for hiring more officers? How many do you have on a shift?
If you'd like to speak about that in the public comment, you're more than welcome. This is about the grant application. This is giving them the right to apply for the grant and accept it if we get it. It's for twelve officers.
And, and like I said, even though I would, even with Rutgers, what? Like I said, shouldn't be this much crime, motor vehicle crashes, what, that's going on in New Brunswick where you have Rutgers, the Sheriff Department, and the Police Department? Due to where, wow, one reason why I asked you, what, the Lugo Retire, what, another way that uses the city money? But what, you've been letting a lot of the officers retire, get pensioned, and come back to work and get paid? Due to where, come on, that, that's the way, uh, uh, that's, that, that's, I'm not going to say death, but come on, that's a ripoff, just to let them retire, officers retire and then come back and work again, uh, for, for New Brunswick. That's eating up a lot, a lot of the money, and I say it's a scam, due to where what the mayor is doing on that, due to where, and I say New Brunswick is doing a horrible job. What, and I will say it again, what are they getting paid all this much money for to do what? Just to ride around and don't do nothing all day? And like I said, wow, do I really need to get a body camera to, where, even though I said, wow, Mr. Anderson, come on, walk with me, I'll show you, even though they've been tracking my phone, making sure, oh, Ms. Moore's coming down the street, here, you see a police car everywhere, wow, they all get out the car, start looking at me, but, what, they're still not doing anything. Wow, the, the witness, due to where, come on, what is the Police Department do, doing? And you, what, getting paid to sit on their rear end? What, just walking this morning, and I'm glad, due to where they know I was just walking. How many accidents, not even in ten minutes did I see? What, walking, boom! What, I'm walking, going down the French Street, boom, right, another one on French and Prospect? What, the other night, what, come on, Sanford, George's Road, what, Route twenty-seven, come on? Do they even give out tickets anymore? Please, whoa, 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 what are you hiring and pay, paying so much money for, due to where, what, what are they doing?
You understand this is grant money coming in to reduce the amount of the city budget that goes out to pay for police, so it's, it's actually helping, it's counted.
I don't see, I don't, I don't see how it's helping, due to where, like I said, what is New Brunswick Police Department do, do, doing? Like I said, you, believe me, one day, due to where, even though, like I said, they got me on tractor, like I said, they can see where I am, due to where now they know I don't follow them anymore. I'm now just enjoying my walk or whatever, but they make sure that I see, I see him, I, I see him out there. But like I said, please, what is New Brunswick doing? The things that you see, you can't see it in Holland Park, and am I the only one speaking on New Brunswick? You're all on Facebook. Ooh, great job, Holland Park, does New Brunswick do this? Ooh, come, come, come on, New Brunswick, with the, with the lady, what, what she got caught with four hundred and fifty pounds of heroin? What, what did they say? Ooh, I think you better bring that dog over here to New Brunswick and give him a hand in drugs. Am I the only one who's saying it? You're all on Facebook, all of you. Well, 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 okay, you're not, Mr. Egan, please, go, go, go to the crime watch. You can go on Chuck O'Donnell's and read, read the comments. Please, what are these officers doing? I'm not trying to become enemies, like I said, you've got some good ones, God bless them, but like I said, I say you're paying too much money and they're not taking care of our city because they don't live here. It's all about money, and like I said, as long as I've been living here, come on, you never saw this many motor vehicle cr- cr- crashes or, or crime going on. It's like you can do whatever you want in New Brunswick now. So like I said, wow, whether it's a grant or not, please, come on, I would love to see New Brunswick Police Department do a better job. You see the comments on, on, on there? Please, I'm not the only one saying what a horrible job New Brunswick is doing, compared to Holland Park, North Brunswick, God bless them, come on, when is New Brunswick going to do it? And yeah, you're smiling, because you know, you know it's true too, you seen it?
The reason I'm smiling.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, your time is over.
The reason I'm smiling is because you cannot compare Holland Park to New Brunswick and you cannot complain, compare us to New Brunswick. And maybe the reason some of those towns, they, they seem better than us is because they're smaller and they're able to, eh, not advertise as much the challenges that they have. We are an urban city, we have a lot of, and I'm not saying that we have, we don't have any issues. Eh, eh, and I'm not saying that there's room for improvement, but it's unfair to compare us to Holland Park, to compare us with New Brunswick, eh, because other places, like I said, they might, they might, it might be shown in a different way, they don't advertise it as much, eh, we are an urban city. But what I tell, what I would say is like, I appreciate you going out there. I appreciate that you are in tune with, you know, with the city and what is happening. Eh, so I appreciate that from you, because you, you know, you are a concerned citizen. But sometimes we have to look beyond, you got to think also about the job of a police officer. Eh, it's not a missing one, and I'm not saying that, no, again, eh, this is in general. We have to appreciate also the fact that they have been able to solve most of the things that have been happening lately, you know, that have to be acknowledged. We have to acknowledge also that they're human beings, that they go through a lot of, eh, challenges themselves within, because of the job, they're not, not getting support from, from some of us in the community, which had led to a lot of suicide and a lot of other things going in the police, you know, in several police departments throughout the states. And that, we don't talk about a lot, eh, ourselves, and we don't bring it up. And somebody brought it up to me, you know, to honor, but she said reality, and how many police officers throughout the United States are, are committing suicide. So when there is a, a way that, that things can be improved, but we also have to be grateful for the job that they do out there, that nobody else, I know I wouldn't be able to do it, that nobody else will do. So, um, that's all I have to say, that's why, eh, and don't compare us to the other cities. It's like, you're like comparing apples and oranges when you do that.
Does anyone else wish to speak on the resolutions? Please step forward.
Move to resolutions, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socor Ludluk.
Yes. Do any members of the council have anything they'd like to address this evening?
Just a reminder that may usually are water hydrants and flushing going on, usually at night, but please be careful if you see some deceleration, let it run for a while, be careful with your laundry.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson.
Welcome back.
Yes, welcome back. And now we'll open the floor for public comment. Please be mindful, this is public comment, not a question and answer session. You have five minutes, one time limit.
March Kerber, two Comstock Street. Major reason why I came here tonight is because of the shootings in Ward Two, okay, where I live. All right, the last one was this last Friday night at one thirty in the morning at forty-five Comstock Street. I live at two Comstock Street, okay? And nobody in the neighborhood was told about it. Nobody knew about it except for the college kids that happened to be up when the, the whole thing happened, okay? My concern is that there was no crime scene tape at the, on the property. There was no alert sent out to any of us. I found out, okay, you could tell I'm a little bit upset about this. I found out, coming back from Rutgers Day, by two college kids that lived down the street from me that said, oh, by the way, did you hear about the shooting? Okay, to me, this is a disgrace. Now, I know why, I know why you didn't send out an alert about this, because it was Rutgers Day. Why you didn't put up crime scene tape, because it was Rutgers Day. God forbid that anyone visiting Rutgers Day finds out about what a lousy place this is to live, okay? Two shootings in a month, okay? Neither one, the, the one prior to that was on Jones and Sanford Street, okay? The person that lives in that house, okay, their flower pot was shot and also the shingles on their house. They had a hole in the shingle, plus somebody was shot, okay? And the one for me, at four, at twenty-five Comstock, this woman was injured, okay? Apparently, it was a domestic incident, okay? But it also got, went outside because one of the college kids' cars was shot, okay? We don't care anything at all about this from New Brunswick Police or Rutgers Police, okay? I remember probably less than a year ago, okay, we would get NICSs, what's called NICSs, tech, okay? Or I think they're called crime alerts. We would find out when something was going on in our neighborhood so that we would steer clear, okay? And now, all of a sudden, we don't hear anything from Rutgers and we don't hear anything from New Brunswick. And I want to know why we're not getting these alerts, okay? I talked to the detective in New Brunswick, okay? Oh, they started to complain against the person, oh, good, okay. That, that really makes me feel better. I also talked to the Rutgers detective, okay, and I asked them if, if, how important the safety of New Brunswick students was to them, and they said it's very important. I said, I don't think so. I don't think I'm important to the city of New Brunswick, okay? Because we don't get alerted about this nonsense and what's happening more and more. I don't even know what you're doing about it. They said, I was told by the detective that, oh, we have increased the patrols in our area. I have not seen one more damn cop car since this has happened, not one, okay? I walk my dog, I have a dog, I walk my dog in a, in a radius between Comstock Street and George Street, between Nickel Avenue and Jones, okay? And I don't see any police presence at all, okay? So tell me that you're doing something. But what I want to know right now is who I can talk to to find out why we're not getting these alerts anymore.
I'm going to look into it for you, and I'll have the answer for you at the next meeting. I'm not sure why they're not being put through NICS, unless Captain Goldeski has any answer at this time.
No, I don't know why they wouldn't put out.
Well, why notify us? We don't need to know, right? I could be walking my dog and get shot. It's not a big deal. I mean, if it was happening in your neighborhood, I'm sure that you would want to know about it, would you not?
I think everyone wants to know, and that's why.
But I'll tell you what, everybody on my street now knows, because I went and pulled the door and told everybody. Because I'm, I'm tired of this nonsense, tired of it. You know, over crime in this, in our, in my area. This is, this is Cook Douglas Campus. You know how many college kids we have living in this area? I wonder if their parents would like to know that there are these shootings going on. I also wonder if the landlord at twenty-five Comstock Street knows that his tenants were involved in the shooting. Can you tell me that? Probably not. Well, I'll tell you what, I'm going to find out who the owner is and I'm going to call him, because I have had it, I have had it. You know, I, 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 I have lived in New Brunswick for over twenty-five years and I've never seen it like this, besides, besides the shootings, okay? And everything else, the accidents, the car accidents, um, but the litter, this young lady back there said, the litter is unbelievable, unbelievable, you know? I don't think you're doing anything about that either. Whatever happened to the clean cities? Whatever happened to having Rutgers students helping out picking up the litter? Where'd that go? Now, I, I'm sorry, I live in a nice house, I have a nice yard, and, and, um, there are a couple neighbors. I won't even go into the neighbors, but that's it, my five minutes is up. So I appreciate you listening to me, but as you can see, I'm not going to be living here too much longer, I don't think.
Thank you, Ms. Kerber, for your comments, and I will get the information through for the next meeting.
Danielle Moore, first, I would like to start off with talking about this water. What type of mayor do we have? Get, he needs to go, where, that was last week, and it's all on Facebook, the internet. I will say this, Raritan River is polluted, how many, how many loads of fish you done had dead down there? It's all on my Facebook, Facebook. Why would he give out, uh, uh, tell families, ooh, come down there and go fishing June fourth? Afterward, due, due to a wrong sentence, he called the state, due to where, what? That river is contaminated, it, that, and I do not trust the water, like I told you, due to where, what? The water comes from Trenton, Delaware, but no matter what, the Landing Lane Bridge starts from canal up here, river here. When you go to Mountainville, Bound Brook, they meet. When it floods, the Raritan River still goes into the canal. I do not trust this water, and like I said, tons, I'm not talking about no one fish, how much fish been dying? Please, I'm on Facebook, I did the live video, three days, how much dead stuff is down there at that Raritan River? What would he give an order? Ooh, tell the families to come out and go fishing on June fourth. What type of mayor do we have? A mayor where it's time to, for them to go, and he will be go, going? And I will say towards the New Brunswick Police Department and to Mr. Chuck O'Donnell, due to where, yes, I will say thank you that you did let me know that my nephew did not have driver's license. But yeah, yes, okay, I understood, and I'm not taking fault, but like I said, due to where that was only, due to where he was in college, his permit ran out and went, oh, and, and he didn't get his license. Piscataway, see that happened in Piscataway, so I tell you, keep on digging. Somebody's going to be digging for, somebody's going to be digging for you sooner or later, due to where that didn't even happen in New Brunswick. And Chuck O'Donnell, for J T Miller, for you to lie and say that my nephew was arrested, sending it to Rutgers, and he never was arrested. But get ready for a lawsuit. Chuck O'Donnell, Board of Education, and New Brunswick Police Department, due to where, wow, you really want to know the truth? All you do is target black people, due to where, ever since I've been here, what? I can see somebody do something right in front of a police car, what? The darn near, hit, hit your, it was an unmarked car that was on Haney and Joyce Coward. Car ran the red light, darn near hit your car. Wow, if I didn't put my hands up, woo, tell, wow, you're gonna, he wouldn't even pull them over. Like I said, what, do you have to be black just for the police department to come towards you? Yes, that's what it is with New Brunswick. And like I said, it's very sad, due to where, wow, like I said, out of all these illegals, drive, driving people with no license, no insurance, how many hit and runs? Five and hit and runs you had. Please, I want you to see the count on how many motor vehicle accidents is happening. Why? Because the police, what is the Police Department doing? Nothing. No ticketed, why? Why? Just like you told me, I can't put my hands on anyone? Why did the, why did the Police Department let the man put his hands on four women and didn't do anything? But wow, you say that my nephew put his hand on someone? Wow, let's see, we'll prove it, due to where we're ready for the lawyer, like I said, we did. But like I said, Chuck O'Donnell, you will have your day, you will feel the pain in your heart the same way, as I never But like I said, Chuck O'Donnell, you will have your day, you will feel the pain in your heart the same way as I never did anything to you. But like I said, you're all just a bunch of racists. Captain Miller, Mayor Cahill and Caputo. But like I said, I'm smiling because like I said, I already seen my vision for you. And like I said, I'm not angry, I'll be smiling right back at you because your buddy right there, he'll be doing a report on you. Sad to say, but like I said, it's shame. You tried to make me look bad, what, did you make me look bad? No, it didn't, the public stood up for me and said what you did, what, just to go against me, to try to embarrass me? Oh, you will feel the pain, Chuck O'Donnell, you have, where people are still commenting to you.
Ms. Moore, you should address the council.
I can speak, please, let's not start this again.
I'm not here to address Mr. O'Donnell.
I can speak, let's not start with you saying, "getting out of order," okay, with interrupting me. Because like I said, you will have your day too as well for protecting people, mainly this police department, who are a bunch of racists. And like I said, it's a shame. Where I see what is to be done in New Brunswick and what, like I said, New Brunswick ignores it? Why? Because you're not black? I'm not no racist, I have friends who are very kind, you walk up, anybody will say hi to me. But like I said, what do I see? Wow, when I see a white girl beating, still being shared, white girl beating Rutgers Police Department up, 800 shares, 900 shares on Facebook. What is New Brunswick Police Department doing? Sitting there watching. Why? What, because what? She wasn't black? So don't tell me you don't see the evidence on Facebook.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Moore. Would you like to speak next?
Carlos Ramirez, New Brunswick City Reporter. I wanted to ask about the plans that were recently set up with their bases on French Street and Sudan Street and other nearby areas.
This is a comment, this is the comment portion of the meeting, it's not a question.
All right, then I'll follow up directly with recreations. Also, I definitely disagree with Councilwoman Rebecca when she mentioned that because, that they're not as big as us so they don't post many things out there. When Danielle referred to, you know, Highland Park and North Brunswick being more open and safer or even cleaner, I definitely agree that they are posting their crime alerts in their page, not only that, but on real time as well as traffic and crime alerts and even footage of those incidents occurring as well. And I think with this money that the police department is asking for, with community outreach on it, I think it maybe should be used to help officers walking and talking with communities or even having community events where they invite other people to have coffee with them, like I see other cities. And you know, it's definitely very sad to see that many officers do commit suicide because, like we mentioned, you know, not everybody is like what they are made to seem like, you know? It's like saying egg, one goes spoiled, and then you think the rest of them are just as bad, but it's not like that. So I think if we did something to organize, to not only invite Rutgers students or the small amount of people on Facebook that post or see what the city is sharing or other people are sharing, but instead send out letters and invitations to people to participate in community events like community calendars that other cities send out, I think things like that will make an impact, you know, not only have the community involved with local government, but also with their officials and politicians who do exist, you know? I think that's something we can definitely work for and I definitely, you know, I've seen councilwoman out there and all in church, but out there engaging with, you know, many Latino community members. But I think I don't see many of the council members that are on the board, you know, go out there and engage unless it's an election that is happening with Mayor Cahill, that's the only time I ever see their faces. Thank you.
You're so right on that.
I just, I think Councilwoman, Council Vice President Escobar's point was that there's a different dynamic between urban areas and more rural settings. Not even between the number, but there are different things that happen within the communities.
Within the communities, and I think that, and I'm not talking, you know, the comment was made that all the negative, that we don't do anything, but the police does, it's always, that doesn't happen in Highland Park, that doesn't happen in North Brunswick. So that was my comment, that every community has their challenges. There is a different, if you want to say dynamic, or a different way of dealing with them because they're smaller, you know, with urban area. But they still believe me, they have their problems because the work that I do, my nine to five, reflects that those communities have, you know, I could talk to say that those communities, they do have challenges like any other one, any other community around here. So to me, just to pinpoint with the words and this is the rest, that's wrong, that's not accurate. Every community has their challenges, whoever said that it doesn't is not being honest. Highland Park, they have their challenges, North Brunswick has their challenges, New Brunswick has challenges, everyone does.
And it's impossible to compare the numbers, just the statistics between different areas. That's not a fair presentation of what goes on.
Yeah, but May, I think we were talking about real time alerts of crime happening and publishing transparency of what's going on with the crime.
And I did say I was gonna get the information of why some of that information was not passed on to the community because it is our normal practice that if something like that happens, they have different grounders when they send stuff out and we'll look into what happened with that with Ms. Kerber. If I got the next speaker, please.
Yes, once again, I'm Brittany and I work with the Department of Public Waste in New Brunswick. I just want to finish off with my comments towards that we should be grateful for what the police do and you guys should also be grateful for what other city members do, including someone like me. I'm pretty sure if you had a daughter, granddaughter, sister, any female that was associated with you, you would not want them to work for this company, this city, period. There's a lot of garbage and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm gonna constantly bring that to your attention because especially during the time of COVID, we were not offered hazard pay. And it's pretty embarrassing to see, you know, people that work at Walmart or people that work in the grocery stores, anything, they were all offered hazard pay, but we didn't deserve that. The garbage is going up and up and up. You can pass public city garbage cans, the people are putting mattresses on top of them. I have pictures of here of schools that we pick up twice a day and the garbage is beyond ridiculous and we're picking this up by hand. So I have to assure you that, you know, sometimes people's frustration, this is a school that I have to pick up by hand and I'm a female, this is a school, this is one pickup a day, one, just one. I have to go back there and pick up probably twice as more bags, just as a school. So you can only imagine what would happen at a house. We're picking up, my truck alone is picking up at least 19 or more tons a day, which means I have to go to the landfill twice. When the hospitals were closed because of, or filled because of COVID, we had to go pick up their garbage with no compensation. We're working in the cities, the urban cities, as you say, and that garbage is filled with feces and needles. I have plenty of pictures and videos of that too. We're not being compensated, we're not being respected. Speaking of the hit and runs that I've heard about today, we were involved, a few of our workers involved in hit and runs and nothing was done about that, the city doesn't care about us. We were involved in our backs being hurt because of the heavy, and I was one of them. Garbage being picked up, cinder blocks and sheet rock and bags when they clean out the college houses. And we have to feel the effects of that. And I have a family that I would like to go home to. We've had families affected by COVID and we were not compensated. For example, one of my coworker's wife was in a coma from COVID that was given from the job and she lost her baby at six months and woke up from her coma with her baby dead. And the city did nothing about it, they don't care, they just want the garbage picked up. When snow removal and things like that are distributed out, they go to Rutgers Village first and then they worry about the inner city. So I'm trying to figure out what's going on there, you know? And I'm just gonna have to continue and continue and continue to expose what's going on here. I've had to go as far as getting legal counsel because there was nothing done here in the city. And we're gonna work hard to expose what's going on here. And it's nothing against any of you, it's just the fact that somebody has to do something. It's very unfortunate to see that the small things are not being paid attention to because we are the ones that have to bear this city on our backs, not you. You ride through here and it's fine for you. But you know, when I come here early in the morning, I have to see there's a shooting on my route and we can't pick up the garbage, the city will say, "Hey, why didn't you pick up that garbage?" You know, at the top of Bellevan Street, you know, with the shooting, you know, closer towards the Jersey Avenue side. They don't care about the fact that a man was just stabbed to death behind a building and they blocked the street off. They just wanted to know why the garbage wasn't picked up. So, you know, I don't know how many times I'm gonna have to come here or how many times I've reached out to the mayor and he said, "Oh, well, you know, get over it, there's a COVID policy in place and you either follow it or there's nothing we can do." So the next step, I've reached out to the governor to see what he feels about the situation that is going on here. So I just want you to have an open mind and an open heart to hear from somebody that works for your company that doesn't get the right equipment. I don't have the proper uniforms, we're working extra time, if we get any ounce of overtime, it's complained about. We're overlooked, we're overworked, and we're underpaid.
Thank you for your commitment. I just wanted to say thank you for your commitment to the city and for your comments, and I'm gonna look into a lot of things that you addressed tonight.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
I pray they take you from your heart, because wow, I've been showing them the evidence for the past year or so, they still wouldn't listen, so maybe with your heart, they would listen.
Like I said before, you know, we're gonna get an update on what's going on with this that we brought up. But just know, and this council has done it before, we appreciate, you know, because we know that we value the workers in the city, nothing happens. So don't feel that you don't appreciate it because this council does appreciate the work that you do. It has been said, you know, when you say, "There's snow removed, but people are complaining" that we don't, there's no, garbage hasn't been picked up, that the city is dirty, that the streets were not upplowed. We always say, "Our employees are working hard to get it done." So just know that we do support you, thank you for bringing that up, like I said. We will have a follow-up and we will continue to follow up and see what's going on, so I appreciate you.
I pray it's true from your heart.
Good evening, Charlie Cradaville, it's good to be back here and I do want to also welcome back Councilwoman Anderson, it's good to see you. I want to ask about that murder, there've been two murders this year, correct?
I'm not sure, I'm talking about.
I believe there was a murder, I mentioned it at the last meeting. Authorities believe Adon Santiago Feria killed Rogelio Lopez Lopez. Not even a NICS alert went out. Nothing from the city.
Not even a picture.
You've got the channels to put the information out there. Is the killer still on the loose?
I don't have any information about the investigation, but if you'd like to continue making comments, I'll.
Okay, the police director apparently not here. Deputy chief, not here. Deputy director, not here. These folks all make salaries higher than the governor. And they can't be compelled to come here and tell us whether there's a murderer on the loose or not? Is anybody here able to tell us, has the murderer been caught?
This is a council meeting, this is not a town hall for the police department. If you'd like to continue making your comments, I will look them up and answer for you at the next meeting.
When's the next town hall for the police department?
I've said this is not a town hall, you would have to call this.
Right, they don't have that, they do not have that, right? When's the last time the police director had a public availability?
Please continue with your comments, Mr. Cradaville.
I'm used to that.
I mean, he is evasive and elusive and, you know, the missing in action mayor is no better.
They'll be out of here.
When are the improvements gonna be made to the crime map on the city website? You stopped reporting the crimes that you were reporting on the website and have no timeline for when you're gonna have it fixed. Can anybody tell me when is that gonna be fixed? We don't know.
I don't have a timeline on that.
Okay. I spoke to the council vice president about establishing committees. This council is unique in that it has zero committees. Most governing bodies in other towns, those other towns that we've talked about, have committees where the council members do work outside of the meeting. Would you, Madam Council President, be open to establishing committees, like for instance, a public safety committee that could focus on police managers and getting these types of answers so that the answers are ready when we come to the full meeting?
I can say one thing, even though we don't have committees, we all have certain tasks that were given with other, like the planning board, the housing authority. So we are out there and I don't know that committees would help as much, but I'd be open to hearing suggestions.
Okay, I, for the record, suggest a public safety committee. And you could have the police director show up once in a while, answer your questions, maybe even answer our questions. And I don't think that's a crazy idea, I think that's what most cities do. And New Brunswick deserves nothing less. You need to investigate the claims that Ms. Richardson brought to this microphone tonight. And I want to emphasize, you need to do it, not Mr. Droulis, not Mr. Shammy, not anyone in the Cahill administration. In fact, under the Faulkner Act 40:69A, Section 36 and 37, the council has the power to investigate. And you have the power to compel people like Director Caputo or the Director of the DPW to make sworn statements in support of their job performance and explain some of these situations that we're hearing about, very troubling situations, very serious accusations. This council has the authority, and I would say now that it's been brought to this microphone, the duty to investigate those claims. And I will look forward to that investigation. On the topic of DPW, is it true that the DPW had a policy that it was okay to take municipal vehicles to the Parks Casino in Ben Salem, Pennsylvania, under the prior director?
I believe we addressed this and then it said he not permitted.
Right, but was it permitted under the prior director? Why did somebody think it was okay to do that?
You would have to ask them. I don't know what the director said and I don't know if he said something. That information I don't have. But I can say it wasn't city policy that someone was able to take a vehicle to a casino.
Right, okay. Is there something wrong with the water? I notice you're still drinking bottled water.
I told you, it's contaminated.
I enjoy bottled water, this has collagen and rose in it, can you give me water from a fountain that does that? And can you fill me up every time when I'm running around during my errands?
Just, I just recall the way it was before COVID, there was a pitcher of city water here and the folks would drink the water and I'm just asking, since, you know, this is the city that is in charge of the water. Mayor Cahill, stop hiding.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar, yes. Council President Sakkor Ludlak, yes.